Good evening. Today is Thursday, November the 10th, 2022, and the time is now 6:30 PM. I will now call the regular meeting of the ISD 191 Board of Education to order. Welcome to those of you who are in our audience tonight, as well as those who are watching online. Director Ware, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
It's on move.
Moved by Director Hume?
Second.
Second by Director Said. Is there any discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now we will move to our information portion of our meeting. We'll have a report about the read for the record. We have Jason Sellers, Director of Community Education, and Cynthia Samper's Early Learning Coordinator.
Yep.
Good evening, Board Chair Chester, members of the board, and Dr. Battle. Pleased to be here with you this evening to report some really awesome things that happen for kids. Also want to acknowledge a former board member and Burnsville Hall of Famer Vicki Roy, who started this in our district before we begin. And with that, I introduce Coordinator Cynthia Samper.
Good evening, members of the board. It's my pleasure to share Read for the Record 2022. So our goal, it's not my goal, it's the national goal of raising awareness around critical importance of early literacy and providing access to high-quality books and reading materials. So this year, our celebration was on October 27th. And for more than 25 years, Jump Start has been fueled by the core belief that providing high-quality educational opportunities to all young children contributes to breaking the cycle of poverty. Jump Start provides an early education solution that meets the needs of children and communities we serve, while advocating for change that ensure all children have access to early learning opportunities they need. So this year's book is Nigel and the Moon, and it was written by Antoine Eddy and illustrated by Gracie Zhang. This book is about a young boy who dreams big, but he's too scared to share his dreams with the world. Instead, every night, he tells his dream of becoming an astronaut, a dancer, and a superhero to the moon. As he has his class moves through Career Week, Nigel's community helps him build up confidence of who he is. This book encourages children to celebrate where they come from, who they are, and who they want to be. Nigel and the Moon is published by Harper Collins. Together, we will honor the diversity in our world, celebrate pride in where we come from, and uplift the essential workers in our community. This is a book for young children that aligns with our 191 core values and beliefs. And here we have one of our favorite guest readers, Dr. Battle, read downstairs in our atrium. We have family classes in this building, plus half-day preschool and full-day care and education in Ready to Grow and Ready to Learn. So like I said, we were lucky enough that Dr. Battle came downstairs and read to quite a crowd of people here. At Ron School, they were able to find readers who were in 5th grade. And then on the right side, one of our educators is bivocational. And so she took that, the book, to her other job and is sharing with young learners at the second job that she has. So we were able to make an impact beyond Dakota County, actually. So here we are with Principals Rob at Ron and Baumsta at Edward Neal. We're always grateful for the support of preschool in our schools. And both of these principals, you can see, are, they were former educators, and you can see their level of engagement with students. We also were able to get some community service readers. Firefighter Tim is at Hidden Valley, and Officer Seiler is at Vista View. Firefighter Tim is also bivocational, working in our Project Kids program at Neal, as well as being a firefighter. And then, like I said, Officer Seiler was at Vista View. So here's some interesting things. With the technology grants, we've been able to put the new lines in many of our classrooms. And so despite the fact that the books were ordered in September, they're still not here. Thankfully, Jump Start has some awesome online websites and resources, so that the author is reading the book in these pictures. And so students were still able to, you know, hear somebody, in addition to their own teacher. They probably heard of the book multiple times in that day. But using technology, we were able to share the book in a different, in a different way. So these kids are here in one of these. In the second one, they are at Harriet Bishop. And altogether on that day, 423 students heard that book in one way or another. That number is down quite a bit from last year. And I think when you don't have the books, it cuts into quantity. Because we order enough books that we can gift every elementary school with a book for their media center, so that their media specialists can be sharing it with all grades. And then there's one in our classroom, and that we'll get there. When they arrive, we'll deliver them, but we're waiting. More engaged learners at Gideon Pond, and they are looking at a new line, so we can see the students, but we don't see the technology. This is a sample of some of the online support in the website. So there's an educator activity guide, a family activity guide, as well as some more activities that were for the event. On the right side, that student is at Hidden Valley. And they always make the book come alive with artwork and different activities in their classroom. So as always, in early childhood and community education, we're very grateful for the support that you provide for early learning and community education. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions? Thank you very much for sharing. Next on our agenda, we have a report on fall enrollment with Stacy Silvine, Executive Director of Administrative Services.
Good evening, Chair Chester, Dr. Battle, members of the board. Each fall, we bring to you our annual report of enrollment. This is based off of our October 1 counts. The October 1 counts, just so that you are aware, they are preliminary, because we will continue to refine those numbers all the way through December, both with our special ed areas, as well as what we submit to the state and other districts are submitting to the states. Then there's kind of a reconciliation that goes on to make sure that multiple districts aren't reporting the same student by their MARS number. So there's cleanup that will occur, but we do use our October 1 count as our preliminary starting point. So as we talk about this year's numbers, the fall of '22, just know that. The numbers that we will talk about for fall of '21, or last year, those will be now complete and finalized. So what we'll be dealing with here tonight will be our current reality, looking at our October 1 count for this year, the composition of what that is, looks like, looking at our variance trend, looking at our previous data, kind of a historical trend lines, and then also our October 1 count trend line. This year, we are currently looking at just under 8,000 students, including early education, about 7907. So we have 564, which would include our VPK program, ES, Early Childhood Special Ed Program, ECSE, as well as our school readiness. And elementary is at 3,400, and secondary is just over 3,900. Grade level, then we break it out by the grade level across the district. Again, this is K-12. So our numbers this year are really close to where we were this time last year. We've reported that a number of different times to know that. So what that means is, is that our attrition in our first grade through 12th grade has actually gone the opposite direction. Normally, we project that we lose anywhere between 25 to 30 students per cohort year over year. This year, instead of going down, they actually stayed flat or increased. That's good news. That kept us flat. Because on the other side of that coin is where we normally have close to 650 students coming in for kindergarten. This year, we're closer to around 590, 585, depending on the time in which the report is ran. So our birth rates in the county and our, and our ZIP code that makes up our school district boundaries, the birth rate is declining. So the amount of students that we're bringing to kindergarten has dropped off. And we anticipate it will drop off probably anywhere from about another 20 students for incoming courses, probably over the next five to six years. Okay? Now, that's important, because while we have attrition that stays stable, each grade coming in is going to be a little bit smaller. So good news that's in our control, some things that are outside of our control with that. Current elementary enrollment by building. William Byrne and Harriet Bishop continue to be our largest elementary buildings. The Virtual Academy Elementary Program is our smallest at this point in time. It really served a purpose for the district for VA Elementary, Middle School, and High School during our pandemic. But it still serves a role for many students, both within the district and special areas, as well as those who like to open and enroll to our district, because they like the way our Virtual Academy runs compared to others. Numbers are small, but they are concentrated in certain ways. Secondary enrollment by building. I do apologize, somehow the legend for the colors and the, and the color and the graphs got flipped. Gray is actually our middle school levels, and the yellow is our secondary levels of nine-plus. Looking at our current reality, as far as composition, our ethnicity, the numbers of students by count and percentage within the district, as well as our additional services. Two things that I will point out are LEP, Limited English Proficiency Eligibility, is that just under 1,800 students, that is an increase for us. And we have added a FTE to help address that with our newcomers areas. But it is, is also one of our hardest areas to fill with licensed staff at this time. We have a couple of positions that we have not been able to, to round out our programming. The other thing that you'll see is our free and reduced meal eligibility is up to 64%. That is a part of a pilot program that is going on in the state, where students who are eligible for SNAP programs, Medicaid, are directly certified. So this happens through the state directly, without the families needing to apply through the free and reduced meal applications. So that moved us from the mid-40s, jumped us way up with direct certification. Current ethnicity, current, let's try to, current ethnicity, broken down by building and the makeup of the different buildings, as well as our current special education population by buildings. As a district, we average 16% of our students across the board, and that's pretty even, both at the elementary and the secondary level. Our multi-language students, our EL students, also broken down by building. You'll see that we do have a higher concentration at this point in time in our elementary, which is where we're seeing the most influx, which is both good and bad. One, we don't have the resources necessarily to try to meet all of that, but it also provides us the most amount of time to help students to reach their academic levels. When we have a lot of newcomers coming in at secondary, time is against us. So we do everything we can, concentrate that, and move forward as quickly as we can to help students achieve. District variance count, this is kind of when we redid our boundaries and also adopted a policy to deal with variances. Wanted to make sure that we were having the impact that we were hoping for with the discontinuation of our magnet schools. This will take some time, but we are seeing numbers moving in the right direction. We have a lot of grandfathering that's going on in different sites where those boundaries changed, where families already had a relationship with the building, want to continue that relationship. Then, as we are moving on, we are starting to become more and more restrictive of families coming into kindergarten, that we will grant to variance only if you have a sibling in one of the older grades. Okay? That's one of our primary conditions. Now, if I already have three FTEs at kindergarten, and I'm only serving 52, 53 students, we will accept more variances on a more broad approach, because I need to maximize the value of that FTE. So there's a number of different pieces that we take into consideration. Both Gideon Pond and Harriet Bishop, I can look at the resident count year over year, as well as the open enrollment count for kindergarten. That, but yet we still have a high demand of families wanting to come in. And that becomes a pinch point for us. So we, again, we have been drawing that back down to only those with siblings, as we start to try to cut those numbers back. Because between those two buildings alone, if I just stayed with enrollment of residents and the open enrollment, I could probably reduce close to 12 FTEs to redistribute to other buildings. But it will take time. I mean, you got six grades. So I may have a 4th grader, and then I have a kindergartner coming in. And I'm not going to end the variances, and now I lose two students from that building. So it takes time to move through the families as we go through. Also looking again at our free and reduced by building, as you can see. Question that was raised is, when you look at the district average, your buildings, this was actually for the, I'm sorry, this wasn't so much for free and reduced. This was around our ethnicity, as far as being socially, racially isolated. It's 20% for the district average, and as long as the buildings are within that range, they're not. So that's where we are fitting. Also, most of our buildings are close within the range of our percentages, as well for free and reduced. Now, a quick look back to the past. Lots of numbers on this one, and I don't have the pretty graphs, I apologize. There's not a whole lot of ways of doing that. Over the last decade, you'll see that our total residents within the district eligible students is pretty flat. We're only down about 200 students, as far as potential students, from where we were in 2012, 2013. The number of students that are attending the district is, is down quite a bit over the last decade. Part of that, as you can see, is that we have students attending elsewhere. So those that have open enrolled out has increased dramatically. Non-residents that do attend 191 has also decreased, but it's still pretty flat compared to where we were before. And then those who are tuitioning out has also increased a little bit. So total students served last year, again, now these are final numbers for our October 1 count for fall of '21, or fiscal year 2022, was 7,634. This is our K-12 population. 7,064 of those students were ours, 570 open enrolled into the district. Then you can also see the breakdown of those on the pie chart as to where they attended. And we'll get into the specifics on that in the next few charts. The different built, or the different districts that our students are open enrolling out to. Again, still 196 continues to be the, the largest district where our students are attending, followed by Prior Lake Savage. Again, as we are a long, skinny district, both ends of the district are vulnerable to that. And just kind of a quick breakdown as to the numbers more on a chart basis. It also starts to include other charter schools, which are listed on the bottom tables. Aspen Academy is continuing to grow and take more of the students from us. They're up to 178 from last year, or last year, 163. Then you have students that are attending either doing homeschool or attending non-public schools, and this is the breakdown of that. So about 815 students are making choices in other private, private areas. And our trend data. Again, as I identified earlier, a good portion of our enrollment, when we look at for the entire district, is our ECSE program for Early Childhood Special Education, our voluntary pre-kindergarten, our VPK programming, and school readiness, or as you'll see, is SR, which is funded by Tuition and State Pathway Scholarships. We had a bounce back this year in ECSE, a pretty significant bounce back. VPK numbers, again, as we were talking about our kindergarten enrollment going down, you would expect to see that kind of play through also some of the other programs in the areas as well. School readiness has made some small gains as well, though, at this time. Two-year comparison for elementary. You see, some of our buildings had fairly significant gains at Neal, Ron, Sky Oaks. All, and Hidden Valley, all had a pretty healthy increases as far as the attrition area and retaining those students cohort over cohort. Harriet Bishop continued to grow. William Byrne is, is really growing as far as the capacity within their building. And Gideon Pond, the reflection that's going on there is the, get the discontinuation of the variances into the building over time. So the residents and the open enrollment in there stayed fairly flat, but now we're starting to kind of prune away at those variances wanting to go in. And you can see the, the change for our VA elementary programming here as well is fairly significant. Secondary, high school is pretty flat. Boss is flat, Bess is flat. Niclet had a slight increase. Your two Virtual Academy programs, again, continue to decline. Not as drastically as we saw within our elementary, but they do decline. So our enrollment based upon last year, again, this is K-12 for 2023 compared to 2022, is very close. The place, it's the VPK, Early Childhood ECSE, Special ECSE that had the bump. That's what kind of brings it in when we add it to our K-12. That's keeping our numbers fairly close year over year. And our enrollment by ethnicity over the five years, as you can see, from 2019, first up to 2023, roughly about 1,000 students fewer over the last five years. Pretty stable in most groups. Our white, non-Hispanic population does decline by, well, about 1,000 students. The largest growth area that we're actually seeing is within our Hispanic population over that time span. And special education, pretty, pretty stable right there, around 1192. About 100 students fewer than what we had in 2019, but we're still maintaining that 15 to 16% of our population as such. EL, if you look back over the last five years, you can see that we've had a 6% increase. And moving roughly, we've been right around 1,500 students on most years. Made down to 1,400 at some points a little bit further back. So being up at 1775 is a fairly significant growth at this point in time for us. And then, as I mentioned earlier, our free and reduced meals, as far as the significant increase, mostly related to our direct certification that's occurring for our families. And thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Stacy. Any comments, questions from board members? Director Miller?
So I'm trying to remember in years past, you've had some part of this presentation, or have you done it?
I've done this the last three years now.
You have, okay. I was thinking with your change, maybe this was the first time you've gone solo on this, but okay. Well, thank you. Good job. I seem to remember that we've had a demographic breakout of the out students in the past. We had a slide on that, did we not?
By ethnicity?
Yes.
Not specifically for those students enrolling out of the district, no?
Maybe I just drew a cross assumption looking at slide 26. Okay.
Yeah. This one here, I mean, you can see that our greatest decline is our white, non-Hispanic.
That's usually the storyline that I'd like to make sure that's played loud. But I just, maybe I just drew that out of this slide. And I thought there was a slide that spoke specifically to that, but okay. And then again, the, I don't think it's, I think we should, you mentioned the, the 64% free and reduced. Again, why was the, why is there a sizable increase in that?
So your free and reduced meals is usually based upon a voluntary program to where families would specifically apply for free and reduced meals, for food service and such. Now, the state has rolled out a pilot program that if you are already enrolled in a SNAP program or eligible for Medicare, Medicaid, they will directly certify you, they notify the district, and then they don't have to go through that voluntary.
Do we have any idea the volume of that input that came through that process, rough? Was it sizable, or?
Well, it, real rough, I mean, if I just look at the numbers from.
Well, I, what I'm trying to get at is, should we be celebrating? I know we put a lot of effort into getting the word out this year to registering for this. Was that, was that successful, or was it just simply the fact the state?
A little bit of both.
Okay, good.
We'll put it that way, a little bit of both. And again, the, the program is a pilot program. One, it's easier for families to access them, to have access to the meals this way. If they've already gone through all the work with the state or the county. The, the, now it's just going to be a, maybe a flip down the road, and that's what we'll have to see. It's like, okay, if parents aren't applying through the district for free and reduce, are they applying through the state?
Yeah.
So we have kind of two different nets in which we're going to try to, to stay out there to help families as we can.
Okay. I do appreciate very much slide 15, because, even though it is a I chart, because of the, the time span demonstrated there, I think that is very, tells a good story. I would encourage us to continue to use more than two-year cycles on as much as we can in the future. You know, when we get like to '23 and on, it would be helpful if we saw at least a couple of years, or, you know, three, four years of comparison there. I know current climate with COVID and such. I know current climate with COVID and such should be a little unfair comparison, but going forward.
And, and just to be clear, we're talking about our variance slide?
Uh, no, the two-year comparison, anything that you, there's a number of slides that use a two-year basis for their data points. 22 over 20, or 23 over 22.
Year over year for the building.
Yeah. But that's just a personal choice. Thank you. That's all.
Oh, sorry, I was trying to find the slide you're talking about. Of that one. Yes. Director, alt.
Thank you, Chair Chester. Yes, I would like to concur with Director Miller. I too appreciate the multi-year comparisons rather than just having the, you know, the two-year comparison. I think, given the change that, that we underwent in 2020, it, with boundary change and all of that, it's just helpful to see from, you know, a broader context where we are today versus, versus where we've been. And a question on the free and reduced application. So there, obviously you just explained, there are two different ways that families can qualify. One is applying through the district and one is through automatic identification through the state. How is that working logistically for us internally in terms of having our system and the, the state system kind of connecting so that the students that qualify in the one bucket are also automatically identified in the other?
We're notified by the district for the students, so it's pretty seamless with that.
I would, so we're certain we're not getting a double count?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, that's.
Or missing people, I guess, is the, is the other question, that, you know, if you're certified in the state, are we getting all of the notifications so that, you know, messages that might be sent out to families saying, you know, you qualify?
We are applying every cert, or every certification that we have received from the state.
Awesome. Can you elaborate if, if you have the information? If you don't, I understand, might be a follow-up answer. Williams, William Byrne's capacity, you know, obviously it's quite high. Where is it in terms of its, you know, students to square footage capacity?
We would not have been able to add another classroom this year at this point in time. So if, if we would have gained another 30 students there, I'll just put it at that number, that would have made it tough. Now, that doesn't mean we are doing a facility utilization study going back through, the last time was probably close to 10 years ago. How are all of our classrooms being utilized? You get office creep or special services creep or wherever, where all of a sudden it's like, well, I had one classroom and I have four specialists in that area. Now I have two classrooms for four specialists, or I have, you know, and so you start using more and more classroom space. So we're going to go back to a reset through the study and say, yep, you know, we still have 25 classrooms available, 28 classrooms available, 21 classrooms available, whatever it may be for that site, just to make sure that we're using it for the classrooms that is needed.
And are you doing it for specific schools or for, you know?
This would be a district-wide deal.
Awesome. Okay. Yeah, because that's great. I remember the, the outcome from the, from the previous one was, you know, really helpful to us in terms of maximizing space. And EL at elementary, you know, you made a great point that, you know, we're getting more, we have more multilanguage, multilingual learners at elementary, which is a great place for them to be. We have the time to be able to support them and move them forward. How are we doing with the FTE to support the increase?
Well, we're currently at 42 FTEs. That's how many positions that we have allocated. We have some leaves that are occurring, and then we also have some, we have a position which we are still trying to fill. This is just one of those areas that is extremely specialized and extremely becoming more and more rare.
So we have the open position. We're, we're staffed fairly well, and it's, it's a challenge to try to fill the open position.
Well, it's a challenge to fill the open positions that we have.
Yep.
I, I think as far as asking, are we staffed well, depends on who you ask. I mean, we could always be staffed better or more, but we are trying to be as efficient because, again, we, we look at the levels. So EL students are broken down into four levels, levels one, two, three, and four. One and two are the ones who need the most services because they have the least amount of English proficiency. So we, we, we staff based upon the number of minutes of instruction for one and two is higher as well as the direct attention is greater because we have smaller class size allocation. So we may only have eight students plus more time during the day. As they move through to a three and four, they get less time, the groups become a little bit larger. So we take all of these students isn't just one for one. It's kind of, we've got to be careful with that. It's, what are the, the amount of services needed? And where do the students fall within that? And then that concentrates how we allocate the FTEs. And we've been doing that now for a number of years.
And we're still pushing, we're pushing in where we can.
Well, yeah.
So, you know, you might have an elementary classroom that has, you know, the, the classroom teacher in addition to a couple of others, depending on the students that are present.
I believe so, yes. I know we still have some team teaching at the high school, but I don't know about the elementary, how that looks.
For a push-in model. Assistant Superintendent Belmont, you want to answer that? Kind of talking about where we have the co-teaching going on and when we have some pullout.
So, good evening. The short answer is we have both. And so it really varies depending on the, a number of factors, including the level of need for the student, the time they've been in the community and in the country. And then also just other factors like social factors and other things that the team determines.
Awesome. Thank you, Dr. Belmont. And then one comment. Watching the enrollment in the virtual academy, of course, and looking at the significant drop, appreciating also that those students mostly moved into our brick and mortar schools, which is exactly where we'd, we'd like them to be. I guess my concern is the expense of the virtual academy as it currently is. And obviously thinking about the great service that it's providing because we do have some very targeted needs being served in virtual academy, which is awesome. You know, Dr. Battle, I, I'm sure you and your team are kind of looking at that and thinking about, you know, how, how might we reshape or re-envision the virtual academy so that it can still be a quality school, possibly not with the same expense with the FTE, the student to FTE ratio? Thank you.
Other comments, questions? Director Hume.
I just had one question. Earlier in the presentation, you mentioned, if I remember correctly, that unlike in other years, most of the grade levels stayed pretty leveled or they even increased. Do you, do we have a sense at this point about any of the reasons why they might have increased? Which is a good thing, it's what we've been wanting for a long time, but I'm curious if there's any sense of, if we've heard any feedback about why.
I have a couple of assumptions with that, and they are purely assumptions. One, going into this year before recent inflationary and then the housing percentage for mortgage rates increased so much, I believe that we had probably a lot of residential turnover, so we had families on the upper grades moving into the district while the interest rates were low. And it's like, oh, I got to get in. Well, I can't. Okay. I believe that that may have played, helped play a part of that. The other piece is I don't think we are seeing as much of the open enrollment out. So where we normally could have counted on anywhere between roughly 30 students going out, that may be slowing down as well.
That's what I really wanted to hear you say, so thank you.
Well, I shouldn't have led with that, sorry. Yep.
That's, that's the hope, that some of the work we've been doing is maybe, maybe starting to show some fruit.
And Director Hume, I'll add one more. The increase in families, Spanish-speaking families, I think is due to services that we offer. One, as you know, we added a community coordinators to, through community education. So I think that's a factor too, attracting those families.
And we did have one pretty large housing, apartment development in, near Ron. Great. Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
Next, we will have our student representative report with Ava.
Good evening, everyone. So things have really been ramping up at the high school because we're approaching the end of the first quarter right now, and it's actually tomorrow. But pretty much a lot of the groups are really active as it's, we're a few months into the school year now. So Student Council actually isn't doing too much right now because we kind of pass that homecoming time. But upcoming, we have Snow Week, which we'll start planning for probably starting next month. And then on a more active note, YSAAC, or the Youth Service Advisory Council, they made some blankets today after school. Just like the ones where you tie the pieces of fabric together, nothing too crochet-y. But they, and so they're going to donate those, which is awesome. And they also got some help from NHS with that. So just to get, it's great for volunteer hours and just to get extra hands doing that. But speaking of NHS, they're also doing a blood drive, but that's going to be on the 18th. So anyone can do that. 16 enough, if you're 16, you do need like a parental form, you know, signed. But it's great for volunteering to kind of see how that process works and to get the blood where it needs to be, which is awesome. And then we also have Burnsville Strong, who's doing, they do this every year. It's like a winter clothes drive. So that goes, that started on the 3rd and that also goes through the 18th. So that just, if you want to run into the main office at the high school, and I believe they used to do it where you could drop it at the elementary schools, but I think this year it's just at the high school. So, and then that'll be donated or just given to students in need at the high school itself. And then our affinity groups, we've got, are the ones that I'm focusing on are ASA and then BSU. So both of those right now, they said, you know, since it's the end of the quarter, they're not doing many projects, but they are doing some like study sessions, so anyone is welcome, but especially the members of their group are there. And they have even teachers come to these, so if anyone needs help, they can get the, like, you know, they can just get help with any subject, really. So that's really awesome for them. And then the BSU, they're going to do like a watch session of the new Black Panther movie, just as like a bonding, you know, and any active member is welcome to that. But they said, they're doing, they're going to do more in the upcoming months, but these groups are awesome for keeping students included and just feeling valued within the community. So, and they're, yeah, like they said, more, more to come next quarter. But another thing that brings people together at the high school is the sports. And as we know, we're, it's been pretty warm, but somehow winter sports are coming. And we had the fall sports, it was awesome because we had, there was a few student athletes who had the chance to represent Burnsville at a state level. So we had one girl from swimming who has appeared there for, I think, two or three years. And so that was awesome. And then from cross-country, we had one from each team, we had one girl and one boy who were able to go to state. And then volleyball is actually in the state tournament right now. So they had a game yesterday. Unfortunately, they lost, and they also lost this morning. But it's still really just an awesome experience to be there, and they even had a fan bus, which is a fun thing for all the students. I think, oh, very fun. And then, yeah, they, oh gosh, oh yeah, the hockey team. We already know about the Colop, but they actually did have their first home game tonight, well, home game, it's in Fairbough. And they're going to have the Burnsville home game, that'll be on the 22nd. So a lot of things to look forward to with winter sports and even wrestling and the debate team. And I mentioned debate because we really, we have a really good team for debate, and the kids are really passionate and dedicated, and it's just a great program for them. But, and then the boys team is going to be with Apple Valley this year, which is, a lot of them are actually really excited about it because they were, they played together during their youth years. So that's another kind of change in that sense. But, and then basketball is going to start next week. They got some tryouts. And, and we also had the Letters of Intent signing, which was just, I believe, yesterday morning. And we had five student athletes, and they were all girls. So we've got Shawna Bruha going to Minot State for women's basketball. Sydney Lamott was going to University of Wisconsin-Green Bay for softball. Grace Adfeld signed at Missouri State University for swim and dive. Olivia Tilbury is going to Fort Lewis College for lacrosse. And Ella White's going to Louisiana Tech for women's soccer. So we've got a lot of great student athletes at Burnsville, and love to see it. But that gives a pretty good look into what's going on at Burnsville right now. So thanks for listening.
Thank you for your report. Any? Director Connor.
Thank you so much for your report, Ava. Also, excuse me, really interested in hearing about those groups. I'm passionate about the groups that include people, include the students, rather. So kudos to that. And then also just wondering, do you know who they donate the blankets to? Is it seniors or, just curious?
You know what? That's a great question, because I kind of had the same one. I, I tried to look, but I, I should have just asked somebody. I think, I honestly don't really know where they're going, but I can find out.
Oh, that's, it's not that important. I'm just curious.
I'm curious too, though, because I, I saw it, like, I was going to go today, and, but, whole thing. But either way, yeah, I'm not sure about that.
Thank you again. And now we have our superintendent report with Superintendent Dr. Battle.
Thank you, Chair, Chair Chester and members of the board. So on Monday afternoon, we hosted 60 area realtors in partnership with the City of Burnsville as well as the Burnsville Chamber. We hosted this forum to learn about the entire Burnsville community. The forum, I love the continuing education credits that they are required to have, so they are lifelong learners. It was planned with, as I said, our partners, City of Burnsville, the Burnsville Chamber of Commerce, and the Convention and Visitors Bureau, as well as local realtors Lori Ulrich and Jessica Nearing. Those in attendance learned about our very vibrant business community, the amenities available to residents, development plans, and of course, the experience we provide to students and families. During the school district presentation, I was joined by Dr. Kathy Funston as well as Aaron Tinklinbird. During my portion, I shared our vision and core values and gave some examples of how those play out in our schools every day. Dr. Funston presented our pre-K pathways model and the partnerships that make it happen. And Communications Director Aaron Tinklinbird shared resources that are available for realtors to help respond to questions from their clients. I probably do not have to tell you how important realtors are as a community partner and key communicators in our community. They share information to their clients considering Burnsville, and they hear their clients' hopes and questions and concerns. I was incredibly happy with the attendance and also the response from the realtors, very positive. Several attendees commented they didn't realize there were so many unique opportunities available for students in our schools. They did not realize our commitment to removing barriers and building partnerships such as the availability of college, credit courses, professional certifications that we make for a reality for students before they graduate. So I really want to thank everyone who made the event happen. I believe it was a success, and I'm hopeful we will continue to connect with our realtors in ways that help them respond to their client's concern. Burnsville is a very wonderful community, great partnerships. Can't thank enough the City of Burnsville, the Chamber, as well as the Visitors Bureau and the Realtor Association for working with us. And that concludes my report.
Great. Thank you. We have board member reports. This isn't our committee reports. That'll be at next week's meeting. But if there are other reports that board members have to share, this is our opportunity. Seeing none. Okay, we will, that adjourns our information portion of our meeting. We will be moving on to the business portion of our meeting, starting with our consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be moved for separate consideration. Do board members wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda? Vote by Director Connor?
Second.
Second by Director Werbe. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carries unanimously. On to new business. We are being asked, hold on here, to approve on a first reading basis changes to 415 mandated reporting of maltreatment of vulnerable adults. We have Amy Pietrowski, Director of Student Support Services.
Aye. Good evening.
Aye. Good evening, Director Chester, Superintendent Dr. Battle, and members of the board. I'm here this evening for your approval on the first reading basis, a policy 415 mandated reporting of maltreatment of vulnerable adults. Policy 415 was reviewed by the Policy Committee on October 25th, 2022. That policy was updated according to the Minnesota School Board Association. Changes to the policy include some rearrangement of the wording and some language, and then also some updated verbiage within some of the language. If you recommend or approve the, on a first reading basis, the changes to 415 mandated reporting of maltreatment of vulnerable adults. Thank you.
Great. Is there a motion to approve this recommendation? Moved by Director Connor?
Second.
Second by Director Hume. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries unanimously. Next, we are being asked to approve on a first reading basis, new regulation 413 administrative guidelines for supporting transgendered and gender expansive students. We have Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Chester. Good evening again. I'm asking the board consider approving on a first reading basis, a new regulation 413 administrative guidelines for supporting transgender and gender expansive students. These guidelines were written by MSBA and reviewed by the Policy Review Committee on October 25th, 2022. They feature procedures and guidance for schools to address the needs and concerns of transgender and gender expansive students to ensure a safe and supportive and healthy school environment where all our children can learn. The guidelines are supported by district policy, including 102 Equal Education Opportunity 413 Harassment and Violence, 514 Bullying Prohibition, 515 Protection and Privacy of Pupil Records, 522 Title IX Sex Nondiscrimination Policy, Grievance Procedures and Processes, as well as 525 Violence Prevention.
Great. Is there a motion to approve this recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt?
Second.
Second by Director Werb. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you.
And that concludes our regular scheduled meeting. So, we will adjourn to a workshop with a five-minute break. Let's start our workshop. We have three items during our workshop. Our first one is FY22 Audit Report with Stacy Silvine, Executive Director of Administrative Services, Tyler, is it Dean or Danae?
Danae.
Danae, that's close. Director of Finance, and Clifton Larson Allen Auditors.
Good evening, Chair Chester, Dr. Battle, and members of the board. I have with me Michelle Hoffman from Clifton Larson Allen. CLA conducted the annual audit for fiscal year 2122, and they will present the results here tonight. First, I want to thank the finance team for all their hard work throughout the year preparing for the audit. I also want to thank CLA's team for yet another smooth and successful audit. So, with that, I will turn it over to Michelle to do the presentation.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Tyler. Good evening, everyone. I'm very excited to be here. I was supposed to be joined by, you can see there's another name on there, Lucas. He apologizes, he has a pretty bad cold, so he didn't want to, didn't want to come. So, he was unable to make it tonight. I thought it might be better that he didn't. But, my name is Michelle Hoffman. I'm a principal at CLA. Been doing government and school district auditing for about fifteen years now, and definitely always excited to come to the board meetings, especially now we're back, obviously, a couple of years there. Felt like I wasn't going to any. So, it's always good to get back to the school, it's back to the districts again, and come to all the board meetings. So, I'm definitely excited to be here. Overall, we're going to go over some general results of the audit, and then I'll hit into some financial level detail as well, and some tables and things that we can go over. But, just to start out, the overall audit results for fiscal year 2122. We are issuing a clean opinion on the financial statements, or unmodified is the technical term. This is the best opinion we can give on the financials. I know it doesn't really sound all that exciting or glamorous, but it is the best opinion we can give. If we felt that we weren't able to fully complete the audits, or that, you know, we would have to modify our opinion in some way or disclaim the opinion if we felt like we weren't really able to fully complete an audit over all of the district's data. So, we're issuing a clean opinion on the district's financial statements. Yellow book compliance, this is related to government auditing standards. It's literally in a yellow book, that's why it's called the yellow book. But, we had no compliance issues to report there with regard to yellow book compliance. Intro controls, this is an area, also an area we look at, in addition to, you know, actually looking at, obviously, all the different financial data and getting kind of a good idea of the actual numbers, we look at the control over those numbers and the processes that go into that. So, we look at, you know, the major audit areas, both on sort of a reconciliation level, a balance level, and also all those transactions, the transactional level. Take kind of a risk-based approach, and we look at all those controls you have. Of course, you know, we want to make sure those checks and balances in place. We have reviews, we have approvals, someone else looking at things, et cetera. So, if we felt that there was any major area that had some weaknesses, or that the control was maybe designed but wasn't really functioning properly, we would have to report that in some capacity to you and say, you know, maybe there's an area here that really kind of needs some improving, or there's a gap somewhere. But, we don't have any material weaknesses in internal control to report to you today. So, all internal controls looked pretty good, were functioning as designed, and no issues to report there. The federal single audit, this is your compliance audit over your federal programs. As you're all aware, there's, there's always a lot of federal funding, but, you know, this last few years has been even more challenging, a lot of federal funding flowing to all of our districts. So, we did have to test three major programs this year. How we do that is sort of a risk-based approach. It's a combination of size and sort of risk profile of the program, as well as if there's been any issues in the past. From time to time, the federal government also tells us they want us to test a couple of programs, just because they want to keep an eye on them. So, combining all of those criteria, we did test three major programs this year. The first one is the state and local fiscal recovery fund, and these are funds that came to the district through the American Rescue Plan Act. So, it's kind of the third, I guess, you would say, maybe tranche there of funds. They came, you know, passed through the state of Minnesota. And there was a few different sort of categories that MDE put into these funds. There was, you know, I think, let's see, there was some adult basic education, I believe is one of the ones you got, summer academic enrichment, got it written down here, and also summer preschool. Those were the three biggest ones. So, there was a few different sort of buckets that those funds were, were to be used for as per directive by the state. We did have one item we're reporting in that program, related to procurement, and just the, kind of getting that documentation fine-tuned with regard to choosing which vendor for a certain service. In this case, it was emotional health services. The federal government does have pretty particular requirements that do differ a bit from our state procurement laws for how you choose that vendor and then what you have to document. So, the, the one sort of negative of all these federal funds is they did come a little bit fast and furious to districts, and maybe weren't, you know, weren't able to have the adequate planning that you normally would, and, or, you know, you had to use them on things. And so, this is something that has been a challenge for a lot of our districts, is getting all that procurement under control and the right, just the right documentation there. So, it was just one instance in this case, but just, you know, with, with those funds coming in, kind of, again, you know, not necessarily the normal planning ahead process that you would have. We did have one item to report there. We also tested the child nutrition cluster, of course, this includes your lunch, school lunch program, your breakfast, things like that. And we had no issues there with compliance or internal controls or compliance. And the last one we tested was the education stabilization fund. This is another, obviously, new pandemic program, and this is really your GEAR, which is GEAR funds, the government, those funds of governor's education emergency relief fund. Those are kind of dried up, but your, all your SER funds, that was, you know, obviously, a lot of funds this year with the SER program. So, another new program, of course, they're kind of in year two of that program. But, we had no compliance issues there, or no internal control issues. So, obviously, another, another really good report there. So, out of three major programs, just one, one item there that we are reporting today. Another area we do look at is Minnesota legal compliance. Our Office of State Auditor publishes a guide every year for all auditors, kind of a checklist that goes against Minnesota state statutes. You know, they want us to take a look at some of those that apply to school districts, you know, make sure that, you know, obviously, you're in compliance. And some of those, again, related to, of course, our state procurement laws now, which are slightly different from federal. So, we do take a look at that, look at, you know, if you had any deposits in excess of FDIC coverage, they have to be collateralized, some things like that, and that you're, you know, only investing in things that are required by the state, et cetera. So, kind of a lot of miscellaneous items that go in there as well. And if we had anything pop up there, we would report, but we have nothing there as well. So, no issues with compliance with regards to Minnesota state statutes. Here we have a couple of tables here just summarizing the fund balance for our various funds for the year. So, this is just the general fund, kind of a little bit of a lot going on here. But, just to show, we have our five categories of fund balance here. These are the required categories that we are supposed to be using. The big one there, you know, you have restricted is sort of the biggest one, other than you're unassigned. Most of the, those funds are related to state mandated programs, and your, you know, basic skills, area learning center, those types of programs are in there. So, if you have any residual balances there, they're supposed to be included in your restricted. So, those are really outside parties are restricting those fund balances. You kind of, you don't necessarily have a choice how you spend those funds. And then, your biggest category there, of course, is your unassigned. That's sort of everything else when you take away your other committed and assigned. That's really free to, to spend on as you will. So, you can see, we also have our kind of budgeted numbers here, our revenues and expenditures, our audited amounts and our budget amount. So, you can see that revenues did come in over budget by about $922,000 there, or about 0.68%. Also, expenditures came in well below budget at over two and a half million, or 1.86%. So, overall, definitely an increase to fund balance. That was three, almost three and a half million more than originally was the budgeted for. So, very nice results in the general fund. Here, we have the rest of our funds, again, kind of showing our audited revenues and expenditures, as well as our budgeted numbers, and you can kind of see your budget variances. So, food service, revenue actually came in about $344,000 over budget, or almost 6%. And expenditures came in under budget there by almost $150,000, or 2.86%. So, food service had, you know, almost $500,000 better than budgeted for improvement in fund balance. Community education, revenues came in a little bit under budget there, $200,000, or about 3%. But, on the flip side, your expenditures came in even more under budget by a little over 6%. So, again, community service fund outperformed kind of what you were hoping for with budget. Capital projects fund, of course, this is one is a lot more planned, a lot more, you kind of know what's going to happen. So, just spend down of the, of the fund balance here. And capital projects are, you know, of course, they're, they're very much just funded by when you issue debt. So, if you have projects coming up, there are probably an influx if you issue debt and spend those funds. So, not unusual for that one to go really up and down. It's, it's a much more planned type of activity level. Of course, debt service is usually right on budget. Again, we know, we know what our levy is, we know what our payments are going to be. There isn't really a lot of surprises there. So, debt service ending at about $5.8 million in fund balance and really right on budget there. And your last one is your internal service funds. We have just, you can see, about $20.1 million in fund balance there, and that is your, you know, self-insured health and dental severance and your other post-employment benefits. The activity is kind of all flowing through those internal service funds. All right, again, some general fund, fund balance activity. Here we have just a five-year trend graph. You can see how your unassigned and your other fund balance has looked over the past five years for the general fund. So, certainly in total, been increasing the last several years here. You can see, your unassigned definitely went up, while your all other went down. And the main reason for the other going down was your assigned fund balance, which is really use the district just earmarking some funds for purposes. I think that was, you know, close to six million last year. It was a little over a million this year. So, that was really just, you know, use the district shifting some funds that you're earmarking from the one bucket into your that you're earmarking from the one bucket into your unassigned for the reduction there. But your total fund balance, of course, increased by about exactly $3 million, as you can see. Also, your unassigned fund balance as a percent of total expenditures, we have that trend at the bottom as well. This is a metric we do look at, just to kind of, to gauge a little bit of the financial health of a district. Obviously, you can kind of think about it as, well, if we didn't really have any funds coming in, how, you know, how long could we kind of pay our bills for? You're sitting at about 14%, so your policy is to make sure that stays above 8%. So of course, you are well above your minimum fund balance policy there as well. All right, student enrollment, and we kind of, you know, Stacy was talking a little bit about this earlier, and this might not fully answer your question, but someone wanted open enrollment out, or wanted, was curious about it. So this gives a total number, at least, of open enrollment out for last year, and sort of your trending. But total residents of the district for 2022, $10,256. And open enrollment out last year was, you know, a little over $3,100. And as you can see, that would include, you know, other districts, charter schools, et cetera. And then you can see your open enrollment in was about 567. And then for a net, ADM served of 7,700. So last year, there was a slight decrease in your open enrolled out students. Obviously, that is definitely good, good sign. So you did have a little decrease, as there was 586 that chose to open enroll out in the previous year. So overall, you know, as you can see, and you know, ADM's decreased a little over 100 students. If we look at the five-year trend from 2018 to '22, it's a little over 12%, 12.5% decrease of ADMs in that five-year span. Take a look again at our revenue sources in our general fund for the last five years. Here, of course, we have our property taxes, pretty similar to the prior year, pretty steady. State sources went down by about $4 million. I think Basic Skills was the biggest category there that decreased by a couple million. And then you can see a very large increase in your federal sources. Again, these are related, very much related to our pandemic funds. We certainly had some of that starting in fiscal '21, as there was an increase there. But your, those ESER II funds this year were, you know, $7, $8, $9 million, kind of, I think they totaled about $8 million. So that was a big increase there in your federal funding, really those ESER funds. There's a couple other programs as well that had some nice increases. Food service on the federal side actually had a fair amount of increase this year as well, as the fund continued to operate that summer food program, as we call it, though it operates all year during the school year. But that is a fully federally reimbursed program, and operating it for the full school year with students kind of in the building more versus fiscal '21 where you're operating it, but maybe more, you know, virtual learning and things like that, where kids weren't receiving meals. So a lot, definitely more federal funding on the food service program. All right, general fund expenditures by our object code here for both fiscal '22, and we look back a couple of years, as well as our budget to actual. So you can see here, overall, actual expenditure is about $133 million compared to $125 million last year. Again, that was about $2.5 million, or 1.86% under budget. So you can see that several areas there are really over budget by quite a bit, capital being by far the biggest one. Salaries and benefits, actually, while they had, you know, fairly decent increases from the prior year, were still quite a bit under budget, while our purchase services and supplies were over budget. All right, food service, meals served, you can see a graphic of what I was just talking about. Of course, in fiscal '21, so most, you know, all the districts were serving, again, what are operating, what I was saying is the summer food service program, which is where it's fully, you know, reimbursed by the federal government, the state. You're not really getting the same reimbursement you have gotten in the past from the state government. So all the meals were free to basically all students. You didn't have to, you know, apply to be free and reduced, you know, submit an application, things like that. So all districts were just, the waivers were for both fiscal years to operate that program. With, again, fiscal '22, like I mentioned, more of those free meals were served. So therefore, that federal revenue went up, you know, as you had more students maybe in the building for more days, not as much remote learning. I did make a couple notes, too, since we were, you were, I heard you talking about it earlier regarding your free and reduced percentage. So we still do, of course, have the data for how many qualify, even though we were able to serve free meals to all students. And to expand on that direct certification, so the concept of direct certification has been, is not new. The state has been directly certifying students since 2008, '09 school year. But in the past, it was based only on if you were participating in the SNAP program, so that Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program. If you were in the foster system, so foster students, or the MFIT program, so it was Minnesota Family Investment Program. This year, for the first year, as Stacy was alluding to, Minnesota is part of a pilot program to add the Medicaid to that. So there has been directly certified students in the past. This is only Medicaid that's being added to that. And we were one of eight states, so that was exciting. So there were eight states that are being a part of this pilot program currently. So I also looked up a couple of numbers just to remind myself. There were about 200,000 students that were identified as being eligible based on Medicaid, and 90,000 of those students were previously not enrolled for free lunch. So it added about 90,000 students statewide to be eligible for free lunch based on adding the Medicaid. So add a little bit more to that conversation earlier about the free and reduced lunch. All right, here we have our expenditures per ADM comparison. We have the last three years for District 191, and then we, fiscal '21, where we kind of look at some other districts statewide, of course, that's the most recent data we have for the statewide. So we kind of have to do a one-year look back. But you can see for your district, you did increase almost 7% for expenditures there over there on the way right, the 2022 per ADMs, about $19,800. And, you know, of course, we'd have to look at '21 for District 191 to compare to the state. And I always kind of try and say, you know, use this graph how, you know, there's different ways you can look at that. Of course, some people want to say, oh, look, we spend more, we spend less. But I think there's a lot more complicated in that, of course. You could look at and say, well, you know, we spent less on district admin and support. You know, maybe that's a good thing. We spent more on, you know, special ed. So looking at some of the certain line items and saying, you know, we're glad that we actually spend more on that. We want to invest there. And certainly still using it, too, to say, okay, maybe we spent more on operations and maintenance, what's going on, but then we spent less on capital, probably related. I don't know. So I think it tells an interesting story, but certainly, there's a lot of different ways you can interpret it and put it into the other greater context of everything you know about your district. So it's certainly interesting information, but a lot of different ways you can look at it. And with that, basically, that's the end of my presentation. You know, I want to reciprocate the thanks to Tyler and his team, as he's been very prepared the last few years. He's always does a great job getting everything ready for us, and the audit went very smoothly, makes our job a lot easier. So I will definitely say thanks to them as well. And thank you for letting us, give us the opportunity to serve District 191. And please let me know if you have any questions.
Great. Thank you very much. Questions, comments? Victor Miller, or Free For All, however you want to do it.
I do have a couple of questions, clarifications. Let's go to, so slide six, the general fund, fund balance activity. I am extremely pleased to see how high the percentage is there, although I do have a pessimistic worry. Is that in any way artificially inflated with, you know, COVID dollars or unplanned dollars, or anything like that, that we've?
I mean, I definitely would not use the words artificially inflated, you know, where there may be some bumps because of that possibly. But there were also some areas where you very legitimately had a lot more expenditures that you had to use those funds for. So, you know, and obviously, that wouldn't sit in your fund balance. So I think, you know, there might be some of that a little bit, but I would definitely wouldn't look at that whole increase and say, oh, that's just because we got one-time COVID dollars. You know, I think there's a lot, there's a lot more different factors at play. And obviously, Tyler, feel free to add any context as well.
I think the percentage increase going from, you know, 10.5% to 14%, that's, that is a lot to do with that assigning the $5, almost $6 million for future budget deficits. So like she mentioned earlier, the all other fund balance went from 16.3% to 13.7%. That's because of that assigned fund balance that the board chose to assign for future budget deficits. We decided this year that that assigned fund balance was only going to be 1.8%. So that difference really helped jump up that 14, jumped up that unassigned balance to 14%.
Yeah, I would definitely say that if you're looking at just that percentage, like Tyler was just saying, that is a lot more of just shifting from one bucket to another versus, of course, you had an increase in fund balance overall, but, you know, overall, that's to be expected generally. And, yeah, I wouldn't say that there's, it's all because of necessarily pandemic dollars at all.
Okay. I'm just concerned at getting too happy about a situation where we had artificial funding, and then have to drive off the cliff and make this a dramatic change one year or so.
One thing that I would add to that, we planned for $3.6 or so million of supplanting, and we were pretty, pretty close to that. We supplanted a little bit more to use up the funds. The increase in fund balance has a lot to do with other areas of the budget, and, you know, staffing, not necessarily being able to hire all of the positions that we planned for. I would say that that's a bigger driver of that increase in fund balance. It was not due to using more pandemic relief funds than we anticipated.
Then to the next slide, student enrollment, open enrollment. Maybe I just, the summary you were giving about this doesn't quite jive with the way I read, or at least what I was hearing. You referenced, because if I read this right, total residence is slightly down, but open enrollment out, in other words, students leaving our district is actually up. And open enrollment is down, so the net is we are still, we're bleeding more still than we were bleeding, we could, that curve is still up, right?
Yeah, I mean, as you can see, the last, and I apologize if I misspoke earlier. Definitely, the trend has obviously been pretty clear that more students are opening rolling out. I don't have the exact number as far as the difference between out and in for last year and this year. I didn't calculate it to see if you're, well, I can see. It looks, well, you lost about 40 more students going out, and about 20 less, obviously, coming in, so the net is about 20 more going out.
Between that and the conversation we had previously, the message I want to make sure the public is clear about, we are doing things, but the overall net for the district continues to be a problem. We do have some, to Stacy's presentation earlier, with some representation of improvement in spot areas, but the overall net is, continues to be problematic. Then, let's see, the next one I wanted to ask clarification on was a couple of slides down on nine, I guess, general fund expenditures by object. Just curious about the, so we, so for capital expenditures, we budgeted 5.8, and actuals was 3.7, it looks like, there, right? With a, so we were under budget at $2 million, 2.1, right? Is that what I'm reading? And it's curious, year over year, two previous years, our budget was 3.9 and 3.2. Any idea why we budgeted so high this year, and what was the difference in there? And what happened? It feels like we didn't do a project or something, almost, like, is what I'm reading.
Yep, so I have, I have an answer for that. And we budget for large computer purchases in capital. In reality, it's not a capitalized item until, for a couple more years, they changed the statutes, of course. So we typically budget the large computer purchases under capital, but they don't actually fall under capital. So at the end of the year, we moved them to supplies and materials. So that's why supplies, that's why supplies is over budgeted the way it is. So it's really confusing and unfortunate that it is represented that way, and it will get cleaned up in the coming years when they start having those capital.
I appreciate the answer. That's, I just was wondering if we, like, decided not to do a roof or something, though, yeah, felt like there was a big, a sizable gap there. So that makes sense. Thank you. That is all I have.
Can I just dovetail on, just to clarify? So it's essentially because of state statute that it's, that it's reported this way?
It might not be state statute. It's, it's, has to do with our capitalization threshold, and then we capitalize items that are $5,000 for one single item, and a computer is not $5,000 or more. In a couple of years, it's not, maybe not state statute, it's.
It's a federal, yeah, the Government Accounting Standards Board has said that we don't want you to miss out on capitalizing these large investments, because a lot of these are, you know, million dollars for a lot, when you buy a whole slew of computers. And so we want you to look at them, if it's a one-time purchase, as a group of assets, and capitalize it. I would say most districts approach it right now the same way you are, as saying, you know, well, that one iPad can walk off, and the rest are not useless. They're still working, you know, right? So we're looking at them individually. They're not one asset. But now, they're saying, well, you're really, then you're expensing these really large investments that still do last a few years. So in fiscal '24, they're now requiring, right now, you kind of have the option to do it either way. In two years, GAZB is requiring you to capitalize them.
My question was answered, and thank you for your report.
Go ahead.
Just a couple of, and I guess, one thing that I noted with the enrollment, you know, to follow on Director Miller's comment, was also Stacy's comment in his enrollment report that the 20-student decline should reasonably be expected each year for the next few years. So I think, you know, that's something, looking at this, that, you know, it does play out in our, in our budget that way.
To clarify, that's of like the incoming kindergarten class, or the preschool?
Incoming.
Yeah.
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 But 20 students, right, each year?
Because of the declining birth rate.
One question. So with the significant deficiency in internal control, am I correct in understanding that the district was unable to locate the original contract for this item in addition to being unable to document the pricing analysis that was completed at the time of the original contract?
The contract, the support for the contract was, we have. The federal government is just very particular about how you document, how you got to that, how you chose that vendor. Not the contract itself, but how you kind of chose that vendor over others. They're very particular, obviously, they want to make sure you're, it's, these are public funds, that you're, you have kind of a process for either, it doesn't have to be the cheapest, depending, but, you know, that there's a methodology, and that you're just not choosing to go to this vendor. So that was where just the documentation over that process for choosing the vendor. So the vendor itself obviously had the contract, everything like that.
Okay, I guess I must.
I can add some information. So I did go back to the original, when this contract was started with the same.
10 years ago.
Jamie said there were no other bids. She looked. It was just a contract. Yeah, so that's the documentation. You should have other vendors.
Yeah, and so.
Federal government, so when we switch this contract to the federal funds, they ask us where to.
Yeah, it's a different, it's a different requirement than states, state statute. So it would not, we would not have been testing for the same thing if it would have been, you basically paid for with state dollars instead of federal dollars. So the federal government is pretty particular. They, you know, if your contract is up, you can't kind of keep re-upping it. Either, you want to have a contract with the, you know, three years or five years, and then, because every time you enter into a new one, they want to see that documentation. So, you know, if there isn't really, if it's only a one-year at a time, then you would have to do it every year, which, you know, is probably a little, pretty prohibitive to do for all your contracts. So you'd actually want to have them be a three-year, a five-year, not just sort of re-upping it every year. But yes, as soon as you pay for it with federal funds, the regulations change a bit. And when there was all that pivoting, that's just kind of how that, that happened with trying to, you know, use the funds appropriately.
It was zigging and zagging, basically.
What's that?
It's basically zigging and zagging. Originally, what we had been doing was fine until we made this change.
Right, yep.
Okay. And then, in your review, what controls were in place to prevent staff from overspending budget? You know, I read in the CAFR that, you know, there's a list of items that may occur, but nothing that must occur proactively.
For what part of the ACF are you referencing?
They added an A in front of it now. Can you pronounce that again?
Yeah, the annual conference, we switched the letters.
I believe it was, you know, I think it was in, eh, I didn't get the page number. But basically, there was, I think it was, it was in the CAFR[1753.01] it was in the CAFR where there was a discussion about, you know, the, um, the budget sheet may be sent to the principal or to the, um, the person who's in charge of the, the budget. Something else may happen, but there was nothing in, anything in there about what must happen or proactively. What are we doing to make sure that budgets are not being overspent?
So if I'm remembering what, the only couple of sections where it would really talk, have that kind of language is probably the transmittal letter, where it discusses just the overall budget process and sort of the legal level of budgetary control, which is a required disclosure, which says, you know, basically who can, you know, can you, can, you know, the finance move stuff as long as it's from the same program? And if you have to move to, you know, what kind of levels of approval do you have to get depending on how far you're moving the budget amounts? That's probably what that discussion was about. But, and obviously you add this as well, so not knowing exactly where you're referencing though, but you're just kind of asking what, what kind of controls the district has or should have for budgetary control?
What kind of controls did you find in place to prevent, to prevent budget from being overspent?
Yeah, I mean, one of the things, obviously, we're, we're doing various, um, sampling for dispersments just individually, whether it be just that we do, always do a random sample of general district dispersments. We're looking at them, of course, for the major programs. Um, and we want to make sure there's proper approvals in place. And certainly part of that whole process of approval and going through the approvals is ensuring that, that it's within the budget, because part of that is coding, making sure it's coded to the right program. We also make sure that there is a periodic budget to actual review. I know that information is provided to use the board and use the board are definitely part of the district's internal controls. So making sure that there are various budget to actual reviews, department heads are keeping an eye on their budgets, things like that.
But that's reactive. If somebody happens to make a mistake.
That's where the approvals come in before the process, before the purchases, right? As, as things are getting approved.
I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, yeah. So as things are getting, you know, submitted for approval for to be purchased and run through, yep. So that'd be, I guess, the main one ahead, before, right before it goes through.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I think I've been here before, but it's been a few years. I think it's about a few years. I'm trying to remember.
And maybe as we move into this next discussion, it might be good to have you here too, which is, um, discussing continuous improvement of, uh, financial governance. And that's kind of leading off of what Director Alt was saying. I, I know in my experience, not with school audit, but, um, nonprofit audits, the auditor sometimes can like cite if, um, if there's recommendations for better practices for financial controls or anything like that. And it doesn't often come out in a written audit. Is there, is there something like that, that, that occurred in this audit? Because as we're looking at with shifts in staffing and, and kind of, um, reconfiguring our, our teams and such, we want to make sure that, um, that we're not losing, internal controls or, you know, having, maintaining better practice, making, making sure that we have best practices. And I didn't know if there was anything in your audit that you cited as recommending for the district to.
So, you know, this is a little tough, cause a lot of those changes started to happen in sort of, you know, July, August after, you know, most of our audit was really on last fiscal year before that started to happen. Of course, we were out here doing the audit and we're, we're well aware and we're having some of those discussions on, you know, how is that going to look? Um, but because it was really still in process, our audit per se, you know, these audit results weren't really looking at that yet. So, um, that is part of some of the discussions we've had and something as you're still kind of fine tuning that, that, that I would definitely say you'd want to keep in mind. Certainly making sure, you know, I know one of my slides said, you know, like you spent less on admin and support, which may be a good thing. But, um, you know, you still want to make sure you, of course, have the appropriate support in place, administrative personnel in place to, to really kind of be that stopgap, the preventative control, the, the reactive control. So, um, it's a little bit hard to answer that when you had, the, the, the kind of structure and roles weren't really in play, maybe still even are getting figured out. But during this audit, you know, there wasn't, but most of those positions have been pretty similar as the last couple of years for the audit period, if that helps. So I know we had some of the discussions, certainly the finance team, we are happy to bound, you know, have any conversations too. If there are still decisions or kind of structure, structural things you're looking at that you're still deciding on, we are absolutely happy to weigh in on that and be part of that sort of, uh, you know, partner in that process too.
So kind of kick that off, but wanted to have other people fill in too with any questions regarding that? Or if we, if this is kind of more of a, kind of a discussion of, of how we're noticing that continue improvement in light of the shifts is what I was understanding.
And I guess, you know, my, um, thank you, Chair Chester, I, I appreciate that. I guess my question is, you know, I went back and number one, you know, best practices, you know? We have new people in new positions. We have, you know, a highly respected retiree who was leading finance and who, for over ten years. And I guess, you know, ten years is a long time. What is it that we need to do to make sure, or what is it that you can help us do? To make sure as our new people come in, you know, are in their new positions, that whatever practices in, that are in place, continue to be best practice.
Yeah, I think one of the things that you definitely want to keep in mind too, as, as you mentioned, you know, you had someone retire who had, was well versed in school district accounting, been here for ten plus years, um, is that you make sure that you have a couple of people that, that can really carry that role. You know, Tyler is certainly one of them. He has well understanding of school district finances. But, you know, you want to make sure you have another person that really can obviously work with Tyler. Cause having only one person potentially that really is at that level of the complexities, you know, you can certainly have trained people and you have your accounts payable, payroll, et cetera, things like that. But when you really start to getting into the complexities of the tax accounting, you know, state and federal aid, things like that, that's where, you know, you do want to make sure you have at least a couple of people who really have that understanding for multiple reasons, for potential, um, supporting each other in workload, but also having those checks and balances too. So that'd be the one thing I'd, I'd, you know, caution to, you know, make sure that you do have enough, um, understanding of some of the more complex areas in school district finance.
Because school district finance is so easy.
Yeah, there's two hundred page financial statement right here.
And I guess, you know, the other, the other piece was kind of me getting into the details and doing a look back. You know, in terms of our unassigned fund balance and the, the grand total of the surplus between, you know, our projected revenues, where we landed, projected expenditures, where we landed. And pretty much ever since, I think I only went back as far as FY fifteen. With the exception of two years, you know, we had a grand total surplus, you know, to our advantage of somewhere between one and three million dollars. And that seems like a pretty big swing for me. Now, you know, of course, this is a better position to be in than the reverse. And of course, with the caveat of setting aside the COVID, the pandemic, because that was different. We're just not going to look at those, those years. We did have two years, however, where we were, um, within, well, under a hundred and fifty thousand dollars swing.
And then just the general fund you're looking at?
Right, right. And I guess, you know, for me, I, I think that those two years where we were only off by, if my math is correct, a hundred and thirty-seven, a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, sixty-seven thousand. That's where we want to be. I, I think we want to, in terms of being, um, you know, a truly balanced budget, of course, we want it to be in our favor, but we have this history of having more funds than originally we had projected. And my concern is, you know, when it comes time to negotiate with our bargaining units, you know, if we start the year off saying we don't have money and we look at the end of the year and we have this, you know, three to four million surplus, do they really believe us at the time of, of negotiations? So I would say as a district, our goal should be to be closer to the two hundred thousand rather than the three to four million.
Were those surplus years?
No.
Part of what the, with the big cuts we made? Like, so like, so like when we go into budgeting, like when we, when we were our first. Twenty nineteen, eighteen, nineteen, whatever. We had to cut so many million dollars out of the budget, but then going through the, the year, I don't know what changes where maybe we weren't as, needing to cut nearly as much as we did. Is that part of that, was, were those, those years that we had those surpluses? Cause I don't.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
I obviously didn't look at FY fifteen.
Right, yeah, so it was, it was seventeen and eighteen. And I believe, I mean, we've made cuts every year. And so I don't know that that would, you know, some years we were better than others for sure. I think possibly there might have been a difference in the budgeting process during those two years. I don't, you know. Again, Dr. Battle has brought in, you know, you've brought in some wonderful new techniques and tools for budgeting. My concern is that, that surplus, that, you know. And again, I can't fault, I can't fault the team because it did land in our favor, right?
I think one thing that I'd point out there is that, you know, it's absolutely a great goal to balance the budget. But if you take a look at that percentage variance, we were less, we were half a percent to one percent off of revenue. That's a pretty, that's a pretty good guess at what that budget was going to be. Uh, we are a little bit higher off with expenses, but that's still less than two percent. And in my mind, that is, that is the, what you would look at to determine if we're budgeting appropriately. The surplus is, um, is one way to look at it. It swung in the, the right direction because we underestimated revenue and overestimated expenses. But, Michelle, what's your experience with?
So, yeah, I was going to say, and just to clarify, are you focusing more on the budget to actual variance or just like the, the ending?
The variance.
Fund balance, the variances, the budget actual, okay. Yeah, and we, we typically recommend that one percent is sort of the magic number to try and stay under, you know, one percent for the revenue expenditures. I mean, we're talking, you know, a hundred and thirty, forty million, right? That's, so it's a little under a million, of course, but that's kind of always been our recommendation is to, if you're sitting under one percent, then you're doing pretty good. Definitely, I mean, I would say these last couple of years, that has been a tough ask and most of the districts are not. And, and they're following a lot of the same, the same pattern where revenues are coming in higher because it was really hard at the time to, um, estimate how much things would bounce back, especially when you get into some of those other, other general fund revenues that, you know, both state and federal A. But there's a lot of activity driven revenue in there as well with athletics and extracurricular activities and things like that. And, you know, who knew what that was going to potentially, if it was going to be falling back. And then like Tyler alluded to earlier with some of the costs, we are seeing definitely a pattern of, uh, payroll investments coming in under budget with open positions everywhere. So that is definitely a common theme for the last couple of years, trying to hit the budget to actuals has been really tough. You know, if we go back to seventeen, eighteen, obviously we're, uh, we could look at different things. But I would say one percent is always our recommendation and I would say it's, it's not been hit by many districts this year. Or fiscal twenty-two, I should say.
Anything else regarding discussion, like even with Stacy here too and, and Dr. Battle with, um, financial governance or, or shifts because of the shifts we made?
I just appreciate, I'm just learning and I really appreciate all this, cause it's, yeah, it's helping me learn.
Just one question, um, and this is going back, uh, again, talking about contracts, Dr. Battle. There had been a comment in one of our meetings, I don't remember when it was, that there was going to be a, um, a thorough review of our contracts, systematizing them and tracking them. Can you give us an update on that and where we are with making sure that our contracts are where we want them to be?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll look to Tyler, Tyler to give some more of the details. But yes, um, uh, one of the finance staff has been going through that process. We have many contracts, um, looking at student support services. And of course, food service has so many contracts for all the vendors. Tyler, did you want to give some specificity of where Mr. Leek is in that process?
Yeah, so we haven't gotten to the point where we're going retroactive back. We're inputting new contracts as we get them. We implemented a software program that we can store all the contracts in. We, we set notifications, so, you know, two months out, we want so-and-so to be notified that their contract's going to be up. And we get to work on renewing that contract. We can put in there whether or not it's been fully executed or not, so we can track that. Dr. Battle signed it. Uh, we don't have the contract back from the vendor yet. We can be alerted, um, and, and run reports based on that if we need to. We have a lot of contracts, we have a lot of contracts that, you know, were started a couple of years ago, but they haven't renewed yet, so they're not necessarily in the system yet. The goal is to get any active contract in there, um, so we can track, track that a lot better than in the past.
And then get the notification when they're up for renewals so that, that process can just keep going? Okay.
So we never run into the situation where we were operating without a contract.
Awesome, thank you.
How do we, um, approach contract arrangements with a new vendor? Do we typically take their proposed contract and then redline it or discuss it? Or do we have some sort of template we put forward first? Who puts the foot forward on that usually?
I would say a lot of times it's the vendor. And if we need to, we get our legal, legal involved, um, to redline or, or make changes. We're typically the first ones to sign and then the vendor fully executes it. They're, you know, they have, the vendor has the capacity and the standard templates really to do those contracts. We wouldn't have the capacity to, to really do our own contracts.
Especially with municipality contract, they have their own legal. So, yeah, they come in with, and so then sometimes we will discuss with our legal. And sometimes they say, yeah, that's kind of standard, or they say, I need to ask them about this piece.
And this is a generalization question, I apologize, but do, do most of them then have evergreen positions in them? That they just auto-renew without a, you know, if, if past a certain point or?
No, not necessarily. I think, I think it would depend on the vendor more than anything. I would, you know, I would imagine that, you know, even if, for whatever reason, we don't initiate the renewal process, the vendor's going to want that contract too, and they're going to reach out and say, hey, you know, we need to renew that contract. We have got updated terms, updated prices. They're, they're not just going to let it continue to flow with the next.
Well, yeah, a lot of contracts, yes, but they can be written to just have an annual, you know, a contractual increase over time or whatever. And, uh, if you don't say, notice, give notification thirty or sixty days at, at expiration that you're willing, you're interested in renegotiation, it just automatically renews. I'm just curious because without the controls we had in place, we, I'm guessing we have a fair amount of contracts out there that may have expired or are, and are continuing under, under, uh, you know, the terms, just because they haven't been addressed, might not be a big deal, but.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know on, on the specific contracts, whether or not they have those kind of clauses or not. But I, I personally think that a lot of ours have set end dates and, they expire and we don't get the services if we don't renew the contract. More of that kind of thing would be probably software, which will be another step in the process too, so. But again, they could, they can shut your access off if, if you stop paying or if the contract's expired, so.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have discussed the twenty twenty-three legislative platform with our Scott.
All right, so the Legislative Committee met two or three weeks ago and began working on the, our platform for next year. It's a little bit earlier than we've done in the past. We had agreed, I think, in one of our board retreats or workshops, when we reviewed the, um, board planning document, that we wanted to have the legislative platform completed before the legislature begins rather than after it starts. And what I, for what I think are probably pretty obvious reasons. So, um, what we did was we reviewed the twenty twenty-two platform and reviewed, um, the draft platform from AMSD, I believe, was the other. And then had a conversation about those two things. Anna or Dr. Battle, were there other that we reviewed that name? MBSA has, doesn't have theirs yet, yet.
You look at, oh.
Look at their this year's, but they, they have, MBSA doesn't have one for next year yet. So I think that was what we looked, that was all we looked at. So we came up with several. I think this year our platform had either four or five, cause they got to open it, it's right here. So this one potentially has more. One of the things we wanted to do in this conversation is determine if we need to prioritize a bit or if we think all of these are things that we would like to include in our legislative platform in the coming year. So I'll just read through what we are proposing and then maybe we can have a conversation about each one or prioritize in some way or whatever. So reduce the cross subsidy for special education and English learner funding was the first one. Providing the legislative exemption to allow local control of property sale proceeds, that's the one we've had the last. that's the one we've had the last couple of years, as you all are well aware. The 15 day residency requirement for students enrolled in online schools. Increase the safe schools funding to expand mental health supports. Provide targeted funding to increase diversity among teachers. Make funding for voluntary pre-kindergarten permanent and increase access to school-based pre-kindergarten programs. Continue Medicaid eligibility as a means of direct certification for a student to receive free school meals, which was discussed earlier tonight as being a pilot program currently. So those are the seven items that we talked about and are putting forward for discussion this evening. I'm going to take a drink of water. Thoughts, comments, questions? Director Alt?
Just a question, I think, for fellow board members. One thing I had noticed, you know, the first statement of the platform, proposed platform, supporting all students and addressing inequity in education. Should it be students or learners? And my, and I, the only reason I'm asking that, right, we have learners of all ages. And then if we look at providing, provide targeted funding to increase diversity among teachers, we, there are grow your own programs other than for teachers. Of course, teachers, you know, are, it's very important to diversify our instructional staff. So those two kind of, in my mind, could possibly go hand in hand. If we really wanted to be focused on students, we'd keep it on teachers most likely. Or if we wanted to expand it, possibly maybe it would be learners and then decide if it's still teachers or, you know, would it be staff?
Good points. And the supporting all students comment is from the 2022 platform, but presumably when it's...
Right.
Updated, that might be a change to consider, definitely.
I think the biggest push with the diversity among teachers is that even in the presentation that we had, maybe a poor meeting, is, is that even though we might have diversity in food service or in custodial support, we're really lacking in teachers. And so I think that's where, I mean, I would, I would still prefer to keep that recommendation for, for teachers, even if it's grow your own or, you know, or even if, even amongst the diversity of our students who are graduating high school who want to pursue education and become a teacher, encouraging that diversified workforce.
And I think the reason we talked about teachers is kind of exactly your, that it's our largest staffing group and our least diverse staffing group. So I think that's where there's the most opportu, and frankly, our most visible staffing group. So I think that's where there's a lot of opportunity there anyway.
I'm indecisive, so I couldn't even take one away.
Yeah, I, I, I like, I like them.
You don't just have to do a four, it's like everybody picked four and that's so hard, right?
I think they're all, I think they're all important and I don't, I don't know that it necessarily undermines our position if we have...
Not at all.
Right.
Under 10.
Because I think, because I think, I think sometimes MSBA has like 10 or 12.
Oh, yeah. I don't think it's unreasonably, an unreasonable number. I just wanted to just be transparent that it is more than we've had the last few years.
And I think it's all relevant for, for what we've been talking about.
Well, and plus a few of these are very, very specific.
Yes.
Rather than generalistic statements, so that's fine with having multiple ones because all it would take is a simple bill to clean, take that off the table.
Yeah, I mean, if we could just get the exemption passed, it would go away. And the exemption goes to proceeds after debt is paid. I just need to emphasize that.
I think it was our committee conversation, maybe it was me having the conversation in my head, around the voluntary pre-K is, you know, that's something that we can specifically advocate for the legislature that if approved, could over the long term improve our enrollment situation. Because we know once they're in preschool at a given site, they're more likely to stay.
Right, right.
So, yeah.
And why would you remove the, I mean, why, yeah, why would you want to remove the 15 day residency requirement?
The way it's, well, it's, that's a good question. The way the state statute is worded currently is if a student is enrolled in our, in our virtual academy and they leave the state for 15 days, they're unenrolled. So what we're saying, we want to remove that requirement so that if they are enrolled in our academy and still a Minnesota resident...
Right.
But are in an RV with their family for a month, they can still continue to be enrolled.
Right, right.
That's what we want, is for them to be able, because I think the...
Absolutely.
The current statute was passed at a time before, certainly before we had our virtual academy and before most schools had anything like that. And so we, the, the idea is to have it reflect the realities of the world we're living in now, not the world we were living in when the legislation was originally passed.
And I know, I, you know, have spoken with families, have friends who leave the country for, you know, four weeks at a time to visit family...
Almost say like 30 days.
And then come back and, you know...
Or they're still a Minnesota resident, but they're training for the Olympics in Colorado for three months out of the year, yeah. So things like that.
Do we know, is that only applicable during school year? If they take like...
I would assume so.
Summer, go to the old country for 30 days.
Oh, I would assume that would have to only be during school year.
Yeah, just be the school year, yeah.
Yeah, when they're active in school.
When school's in session, right?
Okay.
You know, unless they're in summer.
So that applies to in brick and mortar students, right? I mean, that's correct? They, I think Brian once referred to it as look them in their eyes or something like that, a rule?
Right.
Okay. Interesting. Wow. It is restricted.
Things, I'm sure the law was in place long before online schools were a thing, so I think you're right. But where we see the impact the most now is students who are, who are enrolled in online schools. So. All right.
I think we struggled with the idea of prioritizing that. I don't think we actually did last year, but maybe we did and I don't remember.
I don't think we did last...
Well, we've, we've had a conversation back and forth frankly on the merit of it, whether it even, I mean, if you draw it up correctly in a pamphlet form with bullet points, I'm not sure necessarily the sequence really is that important. One, if, however's on the other side of that coin. If we are looking at that, I will voice one point that given the results of Tuesday, I think the opportunity for things around increased funding opportunities is going to be greater in the next year or two and should be higher on the list. So I like cross subsidy sitting right up at the top. Again, some of this is tactical and, you know, gets done whether it's on the top of our list or not. It's, it will or won't get done based on other merits.
Right.
But from a promotional perspective, something like cross subsidy should probably sit on the top in my opinion.
Yeah.
Agreed. All right. Any other thoughts or feedback?
No, just great work, Legislative Committee.
Yeah, thank you.
Get out early.
If I don't have anything else then.
All right. Anything else? No, we're done? Okay, we are adjourned at 8:26 and Dr. Battle wins.